October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, ZBA meeting. If you'd like to read that first one in tonight.
Okay, the first application, Richard Lamar of Piawax, nine forty-one Hanover, Mass. Requests special permit finding pursuant to MGL chapter forty-eight, section six and or section eight ten point two and section four seventy point six F of the Citroen zoning bylaw and/or relief as the board feels it's necessary to allow the construction in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at nine Brunswick Street, Citro, Mass. Assessors map seventy-two block sixteen, parcel three, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Thank you. I just want to state your name for the record.
Sure. For the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineer, Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner and applicant, Rick Lamar, as just read into the record. This is a special permit request to allow in addition to a single-family residence at nine Brunswick Street in Hummerock. Referring you to the plan, Brunswick is at the bottom of the page. The property line is shown in black. There's an existing home centrally located at the site, and the proposed addition is on the eastern side of the building. The lot itself is a non-conforming lot. This is in the R-three zoning district. It's also in the Cituate Water Shed and Flood Plane Overlay District, but the lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area. It exists at fifty-six hundred square feet, and frontage has eighty feet of frontage on Brunswick. The building itself that exists out there today is a non-conforming building. That building is non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback existing at fourteen point five feet and lot width through the dwelling at eighty feet. This property, we did calculate the average front yard setback along Brunswick. The average front yard, I believe, is at fourteen point nine, so it's close to compliance, but just outside. The floor area of the existing dwelling is eleven hundred and seventy-six square feet. Our proposal is to add the addition on the right side or the easterly side of the building. The proposed addition complies with the front, the rear, and the side yard setbacks, but it increases the floor area by more than twenty percent. It is a two-story addition. The total square footage of the house when it's completed would be twenty-one oh-two square footage. It represents a seventy-eight point seven percent increase. I'd turn it over to you for any questions.
First, we'd like to welcome Brian Sullivan, our latest member that's come to rejoin us. If you'd like to start things off, Brian.
Thanks. Greg, you mentioned the average setback. You said fourteen point nine. Your plan says fourteen point eight?
I misspoke. It's fourteen point eight.
Okay, so in your proposed setback is essentially what, three tenths? Three tenths off of that? So fourteen point five, three tenths of a foot?
So that's the existing setback where the existing houses is fourteen and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. Our proposed addition is...
Is set way back.
Which is set way back. The proposed...
The front yard setback is only non-conforming by three tenths of a foot?
Correct.
And what you're proposing to do is just a two-story addition, but it's not going to create any new encroachments?
Correct.
And it's going to be a two-story addition, which will generate more tax revenue, which is nice. That was my only comment or question?
I just have one question. On the plan, it shows the gross floor area is fifteen sixty with a thirty-two point six percent increase, at least on my plan. I know the application did say the twenty-one oh-two and seventy-eight point seven.
The...
Is my...
Site plan dated August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. It lists the existing as eleven seventy-six.
Yep.
Proposed is twenty-one oh-two.
Mine says fifteen sixty.
Mine says fifteen sixty.
Mine says, yeah, fifteen sixty, but...
The application listed as twenty-one oh-two?
Yeah.
Yep.
Twenty-one oh-two is the number?
Okay.
On the application.
Greg, did you calculate the square footage?
Yes.
Yourself, not rely... because you say per assessors.
The existing number is based off of the assessors.
Okay, but did you calculate it yourself?
I ran it around the perimeter of the building, so yes.
In the same ballpark?
It's in the same ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Elevation now, was it?
Sure. So the top of foundation is at elevation thirteen-seven, and the first floor is at elevation fourteen point seven. The property, as noted, is in the flood plane overlay district. It's in an A-E zone. That A-E flood plane elevation is elevation thirteen. So all the habitable space here is above the flood plane elevation. This addition would not have a basement under it. It would have concrete piers and pilings. This is in front of Conservation Commission next week. It would be a FEMA compliant foundation in addition.
All right, and again, the addition would be the same height as the existing floor?
First floor elevation, correct.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Any people from the audience with any questions or comments?
Bob?
Bob, did you have any...
No, and we'll look at it again in terms of the FEMA requirements.
The elevation.
And the elevation, but as Greg said, I believe it's only in this case the addition that needs to meet FEMA requirements. It doesn't trigger elevating or making FEMA compliant the entire structure, so should be okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to grant Richard Lamar of Hanover, special permit pursuant to section eight ten point two and Master in Law Chapter forty-eight, Section six, for his proposed addition in accordance with the plan dated August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen of Morse Engineering and in accordance with the application presented at this hearing to increase the existing dwelling greater than twenty percent in accordance with the plan filed.
And then should we create relief with four seventy point six F two with the flood plane?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll see. Yeah, that's... And then, yeah, in the flood plane relief, I don't know.
The three requirements.
Under...
Four seventy.
Four seventy point six.
F, I think it's the one that applies to this one. Which is such improvements must be consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. One, two, any improvements must be consistent with those provisions of the State Building Code, which Bob addressed, pertaining to the flood-resistant construction and with the building commissioner. And three, any improvements shall not affect the natural drainage pattern of the water flow.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And...
Who are you going to assign it to?
Who wants to?
I'll take it.
You take it? So Tom, you and I are the voting members?
Yes.
Brian's just the talker.
All right, next up, we have...
Okay, the second application is Joseph P. Norton, the second, at eleven Hollywood Road in Cituate. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six and or section eight ten point three and eight twenty of the Citroen zoning bylaw and/or in addition to the board of field to grant to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming building at eight Allen Place, Citro, Mass. Assessors map fifty block three, parcel point one eight, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Good evening.
Thank you. Before we start, I'll have to recuse myself from this hearing, as I have had a business relationship with Mr. Norton in the past.
Sure.
Which is too bad, because I really wanted to...
You can still listen, Brian.
Well, I'll listen. I don't think you're going to listen silently, though.
Good evening. I'm Joe Norton. I own Fish Market, Eight Allen Place, down in Cituate Harbor, and I'm here pressing a special permit to raise the existing nineteen forty-six building that we've been operating in for the last thirty-nine years now and reconstruct a new facility that will do the same business. We'll be doing wholesale, retail, and processing, some pre-made cooking out of the building as well, so there's no change of use in the building. The existing building, if you can see, is, it was originally a, I believe it was originally a dentist's office back in the forties and fifties, became a fish market in the seventies, and then a fish market and restaurant, then it became, maybe it was nineteen eighty, but the existing building, you can see, is kind of jagged in that shadowed gray area on Morse Engineering's plan. What we're proposing to do is square off the building. We're not going to go any further back. Back setback will be, say, eleven seven. The westerly setback, we're actually coming in, I believe, about three and a half feet narrower, and on the eastern setback, we were at about a half a foot from the property line, and we're bringing that into two feet. So we're actually coming in with the building about five feet, and we're not coming any further front, frontage towards the street. The street, we have thirty-eight feet of frontage on the street now, and that will remain. And so what we're proposing to do is we're going to be putting in a processing plant so we'll be able to process more fish from the town of Cituate fishermen. There's been a lot of pressure for the last ten or fifteen years. Their costs have increased tremendously, and they're having a hard time surviving. So our plan is, we've been working with them, is to process all the fish out of Cituate, that's caught and fish in Cituate, sell it in Cituate, market it out as such through Milanese.
And you currently aren't town saw there?
We are, yes.
So we don't have to worry about, okay. And the four existing parking spaces are going to remain?
They'll remain, correct.
And then it looks like you're adding a handicap raft as well, or you do?
So, yeah, so the frontal building will have an ADA ramp to get access into the building. Right now, it's two steps up.
Yep.
So we're going to have that ramped up, so it's ADA compliant there.
Any other questions?
A couple of the, you're proposing a loading dock on the westerly side, and it appears you've got a loading zone utilizing a four-foot easement, that easement. You currently already have that easement?
Correct.
Okay. The, on the easterly side, you're two foot from the sideline. Does that trigger construction issues, Bob, just for the applicant's information?
I'd have to know what the footing characteristics are like, but, I mean, is there a basement underneath?
There's going to be a full basement underneath, correct, and I believe there's a need for a stronger firewall along that side of the building.
You would need that if you're within five feet of the line.
Right.
You might have to sheet pile along the property line while you're doing the excavation.
We were planning on doing that along the line during construction and excavation as well.
Again, not trying to over-design it, but...
No, no, I know.
Sometimes an applicant will come before us and look for that kind of relief, and actually, they'd be happier if they moved it a couple of feet. Other than that, you're... Yeah. Oh, all set.
Yeah, it seems like a, let's see, a great service.
It should be a good project.
And the building itself, as I think will...
The building itself needs to go, so. It's served us well for a long time, but it's just...
Yeah, it's had a lot of miles on it.
Any more than Bob, part of the audience?
Yeah.
Bob, did you anything else that...
No, not really. I mean, the loading zone does, to get to the loading zone, you've got to cross one of the parking spaces, so that'll have to be coordinated, but I wouldn't say that's a deal breaker in any particular way. So, no, I think I'm good with it.
Any comments or questions? Yes, just state your name and address.
My name is Frank Maraki, and I'm here to advocate for the members of the Fishery Sector Twelve, who represent the five fishy vessels that unload ground fish, quite have plonders in Cituate down here. And I'm just here to basically reiterate Mr. Norton's presentation that the vessels unloading in Cituate, those small fishing vessels in New England, are having a really difficult time making their businesses work because of what has become the commodification of fish in New England. The fish is coming from all over the world at prices at which we cannot compete. So what we are seeking to do is build a branded identity of locally sourced fish caught, landed, and sold within the town on a sustainable basis and hope to improve the margin by both efficiency and by selling the brand at a higher price than the competitive imported fish. So we desperately need this. This is a HACCP certified facility, so we'll be able to sell the fish retail or through food service operations, and it'll be a huge business augmentation for the Cituate fishing fleet, and I believe also for the Cituate Harbor business community that will be able to use this fish and make their presentations of food, whether their food service or whether their restaurants or retailers, make it more competitive than with the generic seafood that permeates the marketplace today. So this is a really, really important addition to the Cituate Harbor business.
Thank you. And then, what are the, yes, just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, fifteen Allen Place, Cituate. I think I'm Jovi's nearest residential, non-commercial neighbor.
Yes.
My wife and I moved there twenty years ago. We built the house that was there. We bought, within tax phase, in Cituate over forty years, because we bought a house for my mother, and she loved Cituate. Anyway, long story short, before here was Chris Valeni, an ally of Jovi. He's in a fantastic job. They're great neighbors, and I support their endeavor one out of the seven. He gave us the courtesy of looking at the building. I think it does, but it has a little bit of an Antucket look to it. I think it's going to be great in the town.
Great, thank you. And then, the only other change I think you had brought in is the one-story addition?
Originally, on the second floor, we're going to look for occupancy for a restaurant. At this point, we're not going to be doing that. We will be having a commercial kitchen up there to make our chowders and our, cook our lobsters and shrimp and stuff like that, but it'll just be for our value-added products that we sell through the retail.
Okay, just to clear that up for the original plans, as we, you know. Any other questions on this? Because this is a non-residential structure.
So it's eight?
Eight twenty?
Eight ten point three.
Yeah, all right, eight ten point three. All right, that was the only difference between them. How about last one? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on the application of Joseph P. Norton, the second, for finding at Eight Allen Place to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming structure. Move that the board find that the existing property is non-conforming with respect to frontage, the right and left side setbacks, lot area, lot width, and frontage. Further, that the board find that the proposed reconstruction, as shown in the plan prepared by Morse Engineering, Gregory Morse, professional engineer, dated October second, two thousand and eighteen. Creates no new non-conformities, and to the extent that it intensifies or extends any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Therefore, move that the board grant the finding on the application of Joseph P. Norton pursuant to section eight ten point three, Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Does forty-eight, Section six, apply to non-residential as well? Yeah, I'm wondering whether... Eight ten point three and eight twenty. What's eight twenty? Just change of non-conforming use, but it's not really?
Yeah, because it's been...
It's been all those things.
Right. It would not change use.
I think we had that in there before, because it was going to put the restaurant.
Yes, and then it would have been, because the restaurant use sits expired.
Right.
Who's up for, who wants this one? You involved here?
I'll do it.
Ed's going to take it.
Third application, William Hall and Julie Kay Luet of Sixteen First Avenue, Cituate, Mass. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six and or section eight ten point two of the Cituate zoning bylaw, construction mutation, pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at Sixteen First Avenue, Cituate, Mass. Assessors map thirty-five block ten, parcel five, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Thank you. And then, Gregory, you've already stated your name, but do you want to state your name?
Sure, William Luet, Sixteen First Avenue.
All right.
Good evening. Again, Gregory Morse, representing Mr. Luet and his wife at Sixteen First Avenue. As just read into the record, this is a special permit request in accordance with section eight ten point two of the bylaw to allow in addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at the Luet residence, Sixteen First Avenue. Referring you to the plan, First Avenue is at the bottom of the page. The property line is shown here in black. The existing dwelling is kind of at the front right corner of the lot. The lot itself is in the R-three zoning district. It is a fully compliant lot. It has the ten thousand square feet of required area. It has a hundred feet of frontage on First Avenue, but the dwelling that exists there today, being constructed in nineteen twenty-eight, is a non-conforming dwelling with respect to the side yard and the front yard setbacks. What our proposal is, is our proposal is to add an addition off of the left side of the house. That addition is outlined here on the plan. The addition is approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet. It is the Luet's intention to occupy that as an accessory dwelling with Mr. Luet's father-in-law. They have made application to the planning board for that.
Do you really want that?
Sorry, Dan.
We were asking him.
Looks like a nice guy. So the increases here, the existing dwelling exists at sixteen hundred and fifty square feet. The addition adds an additional seven hundred and fifty, bringing it up to a total of twenty-four hundred square feet. It represents a forty-five point four percent increase. The addition itself creates no new non-conformities, and it's fully compliant with the setbacks to the addition.
And just a clarification, the existing house is going to remain, obviously, and the garage in the rear, is that going to remain as well?
It's currently proposed to remain, yes.
Okay, so it just won't be accessible through the driveway anymore, so you'll be able to...
Right, storage.
Okay, just... And Tom, if anything else?
So you said you applied to planning board?
Correct, yeah. Planning board will look at the use as an accessory dwelling.
The legal notice was in today's Mariner.
Okay.
For that hearing.
So we'll be voting on the location, if you will? And then you'll secretly from the planning board on the use?
Correct. Yeah.
Just make sure your percentages of the demise dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling meet the requirements. It's, they have an interesting way to look at it, and I'd get some input before you do any construction.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the accessory dwelling special permit's going to allow you seven hundred fifty square feet by right.
By right.
So there shouldn't be that problem.
It's not a percentage, okay.
Not in this case.
No, it's a slam dunk.
Yeah, any questions from the audience on this? Again, the relief you're seeking is because of the size of the addition, more than twenty percent of the existing, so.
I can make a motion on the application of William O. Luet, Louis A. Luet. The application submitted tonight for a finding to build an addition on the pre-existing non-conforming structure located at Sixteen First Avenue, move to find that the structure is non-conforming with respect to both the right yard setback as well as the front yard setback, and that the proposed addition is set forth in the plan prepared by Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, dated September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Increasing the square footage by forty-five point four percent will not intensify or increase any pre-existing non-conformities, and to the extent that it does, that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Therefore, I move to find, move that the board find and grant a special permit and finding on the application under section eight ten point two of the Cituate bylaws and Chapter forty-eight, Section six of the Mass. General Laws.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Greg was going through the engineering cycle. He had three in a row, but he's being frustrated by webby engineering.
Going walk on base?
Always the triple, that's the hard one.
Ross?
Three for five, so we're paying them.
Fourth application, Todd and Marissa, and I don't want to butcher them, Glower?
Lowack.
Glower.
Lowack. Thank you. Of Seventy-Five Turner Road, Cituate, Mass. Request a special permit finding pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six and or Section eight ten point two of the Cituate bylaw, construction, in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming residence at Seventy-Five Turner Road, Cituate, Mass. Assessors map four, block nine, parcel nineteen, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty-three percent.
If you could just state your names, just for the record, and then you can tell us what you have for questions.
I'm Paulette O'Connell from Oco Architecture and Design, working on behalf of the Glowaks. I'm Marissa Lowack, the resident.
Todd Glowack, Seventy-Five Turner Road.
Thank you.
Again, some more to the rest of tonight. We're seeking a determination on section eight ten point two, alteration of a single-family, non-conforming structure. Seventy-Five Turner Road is both non-conforming in the size of the lot and the particular structure on the lot. And the size of the lot in R-three district, as we've heard, is ten thousand square feet. Seventy-Five Turner Road is nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine, so it's just shy of that. It's also ninety-seven feet across versus the hundred that's required, so it's just shy of meeting the requirements on the site. However, in the area, I even have an aerial of Turner Road. Many of the lots are half-size lots on that road, so it's actually much larger than many of its neighbors, and it's very similar to what's going on in the residential district, that area. The overall proposal of the addition, it's a two-story addition to be added on the east side of the house. We're going to remove an existing screen and porch. The addition is eight hundred and thirty square feet, so it's about forty-nine percent addition over the existing sixteen hundred ninety square feet. God bless you.
Thank you.
And that's also in keeping with houses of the size of the area. And in terms of the dimensional requirement, the existing dwelling is twenty-one point nine feet from Turner Road. It's supposed to be thirty feet. That's a pre-existing non-conforming structure. That particular portion of the structure, we're not doing any work to, except, you know, exterior modifications. And the existing addition will be towards the side, and according to section, let me just find it, six twenty point four of the bylaws, a no building will be setback on the lot further than the average distance of the building within two hundred feet of the lot in question. We've determined that that average setback is twenty-six feet. The addition is setback twenty-eight point six, so according to that, it would be conforming. It's conforming on all other rear and side setbacks. And one thing that's in particular, you know, the size of the lot is smaller, but really, when this is done, the house only covers about twenty percent of the lot versus many areas, many homes in the area which cover fifty to seventy-five percent of the lot due to the density down on Turner Road and the Sand Hills area in general.
And just one more time, you said the setback that you have on the plans, that's the average setback for the front?
Yes.
What was that, twenty-six?
Twenty-six. He wrote a note...
Right, but, yeah.
Down below, the average setback's 26 feet.
That represents the average, the 20s?
Yes.
The... okay.
Yes, it does, calculated street line setback, sorry.
Questions? A lot of the same.
Oh, and also, we do have two letters from the abutting neighbors on either side in support of their...
Yes, actually...
Do you want to give those to Sue?
Sue will propose to file.
Any questions?
No.
Again, it's straightforward and complies with the regulations. It's kind of a slam dunk. Yeah. As I say, it seems like it's gonna be approved. And the existing driveway now, that's not gonna be interfered with?
No, essentially, it's to remain, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, do you...
Bravel drives in it.
No town sewer, right? So, nothing to be concerned about there. Not in a flood zone?
Let's hope. Any questions in the audience on this one? Do we have a poll? This would be... Eight ten point two.
Moved to grant the special permit to Tottenham Mercer Glowak of 75 Turner Road in accordance with their application for relief under 810.2 of the Citrus bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to construct an addition to their home at 75 Turner Road in keeping with a plan of webby engineering dated September 19, 2018, and as presented at the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, let's see, do we have a volunteer?
I'll take it again, I'll take another one if you want.
I guess you probably use the same tip.
Probably. Full time, full time, three.
And he's back again. I thought when they pulled you out of the game, you couldn't come back in.
He's frustrated.
They just moved you to a different position.
He didn't hit for the cycle.
What is baseball?
Baseball reference? Is there a game tonight?
Fifth application is CNM Realty Trust of 55 Collie Road, Citrus, Mass. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6 and/or Section 810.2 to the Citrus bylaws, to constructing additions to pre-existing non-conforming dwellings at 55 Collie Road, Citrus, Mass. Assessors map 64 block 6, parcel 16, increasing the gross floor area by more than 10%.
And then, again, if you could state your name and...
Sure, Gregory Morse, registered engineer. I'm here with the property owner Len Cubellis and his wife Ginny, representing CNM Realty Trust. As just read into the record, again, this is in addition to an existing single-family home. This property is located at 55 Collier Road. Referring to the plan, Collier Road is at the top of the page. The property line is here in black. The existing home is located up toward the front of the lot. This overlooks the Atlantic Ocean and sand spit area. The lot itself is in the R3 zoning district. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot area. The lot area is 7,500 square feet. It's non-conforming with respect to lot frontage at 75 feet and lot width at 75 feet. The building that is constructed at the site today is non-conforming with the side yard setback at 3.6 feet on the left side lot line and the front yard setback. As well, front yard setback being at 3.6 feet on the front of the property as well. This project initially, this property was initially before the board back in 2012. We had sought a special permit at that time on the house that was at the property. The original house at the property was constructed in 1928. It was approximately 2,000 square feet in size. In 2012, we permitted a renovation of that home. Additional floor area on the second floor of that home in a special permit was granted in 2012 to allow an increase of up to 3,021 square feet. What brings us before you tonight is we're requesting a new special permit to add an additional 384 square feet to the house. That additional area is largely located over the garage that currently exists on the left lot line. We included a picture of this with the submittal. You'll see that the primary portion of the dwelling has been totally renovated and constructed over. This leaves the space above the garage to be finished, as well as that garage level itself is being redone. The increase, again, is 384 square feet. It represents a 12.7 increase over what exists today. The setbacks match the setbacks that exist today with respect to the front yard setback and the side yard setback. We're not creating any new non-conformities. We're proposing space where there currently is garage footprint, with the exception of coming off the back of the garage. There's a very small bump out off the back. But again, that small bump out is conforming with the rear yard setback.
Greg, you submitted a new plan dated today. What's the change? Between the old plan and the new plan?
The change was the bump out here at the back of the garage used to stick out an additional two feet toward the Atlantic Ocean. The property owner had spoken with, in a butter, maybe a butter, expressed concern about the extent of that bump up, so we pulled it back two feet.
Good for you. Thank you.
And then, just, I know it's probably not a big deal, but the eve overhang, are they 18 inches or less over on the end of the cable?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, we're so close to the side setbacks, we don't want to be...
So you want an eve overhang of 18 or less?
Yes. I think it's also in the...
I think what's existing is about 12 inches.
Yeah, so as long as we're not going beyond. Two-foot eve overhang, whatever, so... Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's gonna interfere with any of the parking or any of the site issues. Again, it's carrying up the additions on the existing garage.
Actually, the garage, we're setting the garage door back by about two and a half feet, which gives us space for a car in front of that garage, right? We'll often park a car there, but it'll hang out. The extra two and a half, three feet will allow a car to be parked in there without getting into the street.
I just remember that being a concern in 2012.
Yeah, parking's a huge issue up there, so any time you can create more space, the better, don't worry.
Any other questions?
Really just an observation. Is there, was there a reason why it didn't come? The garage wasn't included in the original application?
Financial primarily.
Okay.
It looked like it needed something. It was a little unbalanced, but we had a budget that we wanted to live with it, and it seemed to be a better time to do that.
And that's completely legitimate, and I was hoping that was what your answer was. I'm, my concern is I don't want to be in a situation where we have creep, you know, toward expanding, you know? We're gonna get away with just doing this much now, and then we'll do a little bit more later and things. I don't think many people have that idea in their mind, but I'd like to go on record that I don't approve of it. But I can fully understand that the garage was a, you know, just an improvement that you couldn't do at that time as much as you might have liked to, so... I think that improved, it balances the house. Pulling the garage door back, allowing for the parking is an improvement. And you're really not creating any new non-conformities to the extent that you're expanding the non-conformity by going up. I wouldn't see it as being detrimental to the neighborhood.
Again, it looks like you're keeping, keep the addition in line with the existing house as far as the local adornment, the pitch of the roof, so that it'll look like it belongs.
I actually did have one question. I noticed right now on the top of the garage, it looks like, is those HVAC units? Are they gonna have to be relocated?
Yeah, they will be relocated.
The garage door, there'll be a small balcony.
Okay.
So we're setting that second floor back about four feet, so we can create a little port.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No, really not, John. I'm good.
And then, any questions in the audience or comments?
No, I'm the guy next door.
All right, so you want to just state your name and...
Alex Alprez.
Address and...
53 Collier.
And we'd love to hear what you think about the project.
So I think it's okay going up, and we talked about it. And originally, it was gonna go further back. Then he adjusted, so it's not going back quite as far, it's even with the deck. And we're good with that.
Yeah, we're glad to see that he was able to talk to you at a time and get that straightened out.
We're always happy to see neighbors be aware of the project before they try to come here and learn about it in public. Can be much more convenient and successful.
We have a motion.
I make a motion on the application of Leonard G. Cubellis and Virginia Ann Cubellis, stressed to the CNM Realty Trust for the application submitted tonight for a special permit finding to build an addition on the pre-existing non-conforming structure located at 55 Collier Road. Moved to find that the existing structure and lot are non-conforming as it relates to lot area, frontage, front yard setback, left side yard setback, as well as lot width. That the proposed addition is set forth in the plan prepared by Morse Engineering dated September 19, 2018, increasing the square footage by 14.4%. Moved to find that it will not increase any pre-existing non-conformities to the extent that it intensifies or extends any existing non-conformities, that the proposed addition is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that I move that the board issue the special permit pursuant to Section 810.2 of the bylaws and Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Mass. General Laws.
One second. Second. All those in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sue, I don't believe we have any minutes or anything like that, so we don't have to...
The only thing, Danny had some meetings, she just wanted to approve.
Will they email out to us from the September?
June.
Oh, June.
I think we had them...
We read them quite a while ago.
We did have them in June. I think we responded to the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Move to accept the minutes as...
Move to accept the minutes of June 7th as emailed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Want me to take that fifth one? I'll take it. We'll nail them later.
I guess we took a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All right.
Moving adjourns.